Welcome. My name is Helen Holton from the 8th District Chair of the Budget and Appropriations Committee, and we are here this evening to hear, to begin the budget process with the budget overview of City Council Bill 15532, an ordinance concerning ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2016 year, by authority of Article 6, Board of Estimates, Section 3, Baltimore City Charter 1996 Edition, that the following amounts or so much thereof, as shall be sufficient, are hereby appropriated, subject to the provisions hereinafter set forth for the purpose of carrying out the programs included in the operating budget and the projects listed in the capital budget from the amounts estimated to be available in the designated funds during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2016. I'll not read through all the individual numbers, but it is certainly available to you online should you choose to study and review the detail. I am joined this evening, to my left, your right, Council President C. Bernard C. Jack Young; next to him, Councilman Jim Craft of the 1st District, Vice Chair of the Committee; Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 7th District, Member of the Committee;
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Council Vice President Ed Ryssinger from the 10th District, Member of the Committee;
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark from the 14th District;
Thank you.
To my right, your left, Ms. Marguerite Murray, Staff to the Committee; next to her is a member of the Finance Department, Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District;
Thank you, ma'am.
Member of the Committee; Councilman Brandon Scott from the 2nd District; and Councilman Rochelle Ricky Spector, Dean of the Council, from the 5th District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We will begin, we have been joined by the Comptroller of the City of Baltimore, the Honorable Joan Pratt, welcome, Madam Comptroller. We will begin with an overview presentation by the Finance Department, led by the Director of the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, Mr. Andrew Klein. Mr. Klein, we will have you begin, and we will wait until he goes through the overview before we ask questions or clarification of anything that we hear this evening or have had the chance to glean from our copies of the budget. Mr. Klein, if you would begin with the introduction of your staff that are here with you this evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the City Council. Thank you for inviting the Finance Department to provide an overview of the Board of Estimates Recommended Fiscal 2016 Ordinance of Estimates. We could go to the next slide. This is going to be a team approach to the presentation. I will introduce the members of the Finance Team who are assisting me with the presentation as they, as they come up to present. The agenda is starting with a budget overview and highlights, look at the 10-Year Financial Plan Update, Revenue Outlook, Fixed Cost Trends, the Recommended Budget Plan Highlights, and then Fiscal Risks. So, the fiscal 2016 recommended budget reflects economic recovery, fiscal sustainability, and proactive service delivery. We are seeing increased revenue driven by rising property values. You'll see in this budget that our focus is on making our city's services more proactive. A few examples: a new policing schedule, a new EMS schedule and approach, cyclical tree maintenance, tree pruning, and more proactive rat control. You'll hear that we've made significant progress in the 10-Year Financial Plan. We've cut the long-range budget deficit in half. We've reduced the property tax rate for homeowners. We have generated nearly $100 million in new capital investment for blight elimination and infrastructure projects, and we have shrunk unfunded liabilities in pension and retiree health benefits by $850 million, or more than a quarter. This budget also includes further additional capital spending, including Pago, Pago Capital from the General Fund, a continuation of county transportation bond funding, and a record $65 million in general obligation bond funding. It also includes pay increases for our employees. Next slide. The top, the top table here is the, is all funds, and the bottom table is the General Fund. The 4.4% revenue growth in the General Fund is the strongest since before the Great Recession. Next slide. This budget also brings full-time, permanent-funded positions below $10,000. This is the smallest workforce in the city's modern history. Most of the reductions in fiscal 16 are the result of changes to the police and fire schedules. We also have reflected here, just as a note, 261 crossing guard positions that were classified as, as full-time have been changed appropriately to, to what they are, which is part-time. We have a goal in the 10-Year Financial Plan of reducing the size of the city workforce, funded by the General Fund, by 10%, by fiscal '22. We want to do that through attrition and efficiency. So far, by the way we're measuring this, we have reduced the workforce by 3%. I want to highlight some key changes from the preliminary budget plan. The budget before you includes $4 million from fund balance for one-time employee bonuses that have been negotiated with AFSMI and Cub. Their contracts also include average 2% pay raises over fiscal 2014 through 2016. They also cap leave payouts, make personal days, use or lose, and reduce the tax-free accident time payout from 100% of salary to 85%. This budget also reduces the funding for the circulator that was included in the preliminary budget through cost reductions that have been announced by the Department of Transportation, totaling $3.1 million. It includes a tobacco use premium surcharge for employees, and the elimination of ED drug coverage for retirees. The tobacco premium is intended to reduce tobacco use among employees, and if it works as planned, we will not see the savings that we're estimating here, and that would be a good thing. But between these two policy changes, we would expect to save $2.3 million on an annualized basis. And finally, the budget includes a $4.8 million increase to General Fund Pago Capital from a settlement with Unisys Corporation, and that funding will be used for upgrade of the city's website, and also development of the property tax billing system. Next slide. So, I want to go through some of the key drivers of cost increases for maintaining the current level of city services. The first is the Fire and Police, the Fraternal Order of Police contract. This covers fiscals '14 through '16. The number you see there, 13.5 million, is the net cost. It's pay increases, net of position abolishments, and overtime savings. Under this contract, there's a change in the police schedule. There is also, there is also a reduction in days off, cap on leave payouts, and also accident time payouts. The fleet increase is a combination of rebase lining fleet maintenance costs, and also increased debt service from the third major purchase of vehicles that's planned for fiscal 16, and that will be another 505 vehicles refreshed in the fleet. The civilian salary increases include 2% for MAPS and AFSMI, and 1% for Cub, and that's because originally we planned on 2% for Cub. They asked in contract negotiations for 1% to be moved up to 1114, and so that's, that's what we did. The risk management increase includes $1.5 million increase in workers' compensation costs, and $5 million to amortize the unfunded liability in the Risk Management Fund. The circulator, $6 million was our estimated cost for the operating subsidy, bus replacement fund, and paying, beginning to pay down the accumulated deficit in the, in the special fund. So, this budget does include, after the, after the operating cost reductions, $2.9 million for the circulator, $2.2 million of that is to establish a bus replacement fund, and $700,000 begins to pay down that, that deficit, which was at $11 million after fiscal '14, and will be higher after fiscal '15. Teacher pension, so, this is the, the last increase to the city's teacher pension obligation under state law. It's an increase to 7.9, or 17.9 million. The city share stays at that level under state law, and any increases in the cost, the normal cost of the city retirement program after fiscal '16 would be the responsibility of the school system. The Board of Elections increases are related to new voting machines and charges from the State Board of Elections, and the Affordable Care Act increase is to cover employees who work 30 to 39 hours per week. State and federal funding. Federal funding is down about $12 million from fiscal '15. Most of that reduction is in the area, in the health area, due to expanded coverage under the Affordable Care Act, although the, the federal funding does include a $1.1 million increase for nurse home visiting under the Maternal and Child Health Program. The state funding, state grant funding is also lower than fiscal '15. That's primarily because, as you may recall, the city received $52 million over three years from the Customer Investment Fund related to the Exelon Constellation merger. Most of that funding was appropriated in fiscal '14 and '15, so there's a much lower, smaller amount to be, remaining to be appropriated in fiscal '16. The state is, is providing $1.7 million in new AIDS case management funding. Next slide. So, under utility funds, the budget includes a total of $459.4 million for our fee-funded water, wastewater, and stormwater enterprises. The updates to the metering system are expected to be complete by April 2016, and the, the infrastructure investment, the progress on repairing, rehabilitating, replacing the water and sewer pipes is, is really ramping up. The Department of Public Works expects to replace almost 100,000 linear feet of water distribution pipe in fiscal '16, and that's an increase of $39,000 from fiscal 2014. Casino Local Impact Aid. We have budgeted the Casino Impact Aid for fiscal '16, similar to the way we did this fiscal year. It's in two tiers. The first tier is $6.9 million. We've shown, this slide shows you some of the, the projects included in that, including workforce training, infrastructure upgrades, public safety and sanitation, and community enhancement projects that are developed in consultation with the Local Development Corporation. We have included additional funding in the event that the revenues are higher than $6.9 million. There's more detail about the Casino Impact Aid budget on page 32 of Volume 2 in the Agency Detail Book. So now, we're going to move to the 10-Year Financial Plan Update. I want to ask Kristin Barczak, who's our 10-Year Plan Coordinator, to walk us through these slides.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and honorable members of the City Council. As Andrew mentioned, I'm here to provide an update of the city's 10-Year Financial Plan. So, on Slide 12, the 10-Year Plan is built on options to reinvest and address a broad range of issues critical to Baltimore's long-range fiscal sustainability. These strategies and alternatives are organized within four cornerstones of the city's fiscal foundation. These cornerstones are structural budget balance, tax competitiveness, infrastructure investment, and addressing long-term liabilities. This slide demonstrates the future 10-Year Plan initiatives organized within the cornerstones. I'll touch on some of these initiatives later in the presentation. Moving to Slide 13. The original 10-Year Financial Plan showed city general fund revenues not keeping pace with current services expenditures, an accumulative baseline deficit of $745 million, as depicted in the chart. The deficit was projected to erode the city's reserves in three years. In addition to the projected cumulative general fund deficit, the cumulative shortfall for maintaining sustainable levels of infrastructure maintenance was estimated at $1.3 billion. Moving to Slide 14. This chart shows the progress that's been made in reducing the projected cumulative shortfall and the future projection. The red portion is the projected cost deficit to maintain the current level of service into the future. The green portion is the projected cost of, of the 10-Year Plan initiatives to reduce property tax rate, increase infrastructure investment, improve employee pay, and strengthen the balance sheet. The city has reduced the baseline deficit by approximately $352 million, or 53%. In this projection, revenue slows in fiscal 2019. We don't explicitly assume a recession, but we are conservative because one is likely to occur before fiscal '22. We are currently 71 months into an economic expansion period. Dr. Voorhees will talk more about the revenue projection later. Moving to Slide 15. This slide shows the dollar amount of initiatives completed. The top portion of the table shows the savings that the city has put into place, and the projected savings from these, or, sorry, the initiatives the city has put into place, and the projected savings from these initiatives. The bottom portion of the table shows the completed initiatives that are investments in our communities, workforce, and fiscal sustainability. This portion of the table shows the cost of making these investments. Moving to Slide 16. This is a summary slide of changes since the original baseline forecast was built. The top line shows the original projected cumulative fiscal gap of $745 million. The next line shows the savings from the initiatives completed that were outlined on the previous slide. The third line shows the cost of the initiatives that are completed that were investments under the 10-Year Financial Plan. The fourth line shows the expenditure baseline change of $357 million. Part of the expenditure baseline change was influenced by external factors, such as complying with the federal standards of the Affordable Care Act, and another part of the expenditure baseline change is due to budget decisions such as contract negotiations and investments in things such as the family league. The revenue baseline forecast has also changed and is up by $235 million. This leaves a current cumulative gap of $612 million. Moving on to Slide 17. If the city is able to implement the remaining initiatives as planned, the initiative baseline deficit will be reduced to $40 million, or 5% of the original projected cumulative baseline shortfall. This chart shows that. Moving on to Slide 18. This slide has a table that shows a list of future initiatives and the savings and costs associated with each of those initiatives. This list includes initiatives to reduce the city's long-term liability, such as future retiree benefit changes, initiatives to achieve structural budget balance, such as rightsizing the city's fleet, and initiatives to invest in the city's tax competitiveness. The city hopes to complete these initiatives in fiscal '16 and beyond. Moving on to Slide 19. This slide shows capital funding forecast to close the $1.3 billion infrastructure gap. Because of the savings under the 10-Year Financial Plan, the city is able to invest an additional $9 million in Pago above what was invested before the recession. The city is also able to increase its geo-bond authority while remaining within the best practices borrowing limits. The city is extending use of county transportation bonds beyond fiscal '15. County transportation bonds partially offset the loss of highway user revenue and federal funding, which will be illustrated in future slides. As part of the move from Pago to lease financing, the city was able to release one-time funds from the fleet reserve to help pay for current capital needs. Finally, in the chart, the administration introduced a bill in July of 2014 related to the sale of four municipal parking garages. The city anticipates the sale of the garages could raise $50 million or more. Moving on to Slide 20. This slide shows Pago capital funding. The blue bars show the baseline funding in the initiative, or, I'm sorry, the blue bars show the baseline capital funding. This is at an $8 million level. The red portion of the bars show the initiative funding under the 10-Year Plan. This is an increase of $9 million a year, approximately. And the green portion of the bars show funding from one-time sources, such as a $30 million transfer from the fleet fund for whole block demolition, street resurfacing, recreation centers, and IT modernization, $5 million for police technology, and $2 million from homeownership incentives. This concludes the update on the 10-Year Financial Plan. Thank you.
I next want to invite up Dr. Bill Voorhees, our Director of Revenue and Tax Analysis, to talk about the revenue forecast.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, President Young, members of the Baltimore City Council. My name's Bill Voorhees, and I would like to present the overview of the revenue. As you can see, our revenue continues to grow, albeit at a relatively slow pace. It is still good news that it is growing, and growing rather consistently. The 2016 estimate includes $13.8 million from fund balance, $5 million for speed cameras, of that $5 million from speed cameras, $4.8 from the Unisys settlement, and $4 million for employee bonuses. The fund balance this year is $6.3 million higher than it was in fiscal '15. The largest increase in, matter of fact, the largest revenue source, of course, is property tax, and the largest increase we have seen is in property tax also. This is driven by a 9% increase in assessments for Group 3. We're seeing some relatively strong growth in the assessments of the property this year. Income taxes are up a little bit. We have seen in income taxes an increase of about $30 a week in wages, year over year, from '13 through the end of '14, and we're, that's about 2%, 2.7% increase, and we're also anticipating strong capital gains in the income tax. I shouldn't say strong, but good moderate growth in capital gains this year, as the stock market has been relatively good. The highway user revenues are up 1.2%, and state aid is down 0.8%. Our energy taxes, we're estimating an increase of 1.5%. Most of this is driven by our increase in, in the rate to match inflation. The telecommunications, excuse me, the net parking tax is up by 4.7%. This is about $1.4 million from higher parking tax collections, $1.5 million from higher garage incomes, and $1.6 million from fines and penalties. The telecommunications tax, we're up 1.5%. This just represents the continued trend that we're seeing in the telecommunications field. The recordation tax, we're looking, we're anticipating that to be down. We've seen refinancing drop off. We believe that that is pretty much, refinancing is saturated, and as the interest rates are anticip, we're anticipating higher interest rates this year, as Fed have indicated, they will be increasing them. We think that that's going to be a, a loss for us in, in revenue growth. The hotel tax, we're anticipating one, excuse me, a 0.1% increase. The transfer tax, a 4.2%, and that's based primarily on housing sales, and housing and commercial building sales. Speed cameras, 100% increase. Let's see, and investment earnings, an 18.8% increase, and of course, that is driven by our estimates of what we think the interest rates will be. The housing market has looked stable. We don't see anything terribly wrong with it. It is not growing as fast as we'd really like it to, but we do see the inventory is relatively stable. The prices, both median and mean prices are, are consistent, and have been relatively consistent over the last two to three years. We have a, a good steady growth in sales. So, that being said, you know, we, we anticipate a, a slow but continued growth in the housing The property tax reflections reflect this, the assessments that we're seeing. This chart includes the personal, the public utilities, and also it's net of the homestead The total value of property taxes, we're anticipating to be $857.2 million for this From this chart, you can see the assessments have increased this year by 9.6% for Group 3. Last year, they increased by 7%. At a phase-in, from a phase-in perspective, that's 2%, 2.3% last year, and 3.2% this year. Again, as you can see from the chart, we've had increases in assessments for two years. We still have another good year, we're anticipating another year, good year coming, which was at a zero assessment gain about, about three years ago. So, in '17, it looks like it may be promising too, for strong assessments. We believe much, I would also note that the assessment credit is, is down about $10 million, or 22%. And we believe we're seeing the, the results in the, in the strong assessments, that part of this result is the efforts of the Billing Integrity Unit, bringing a lot of property back online that was previously not on, or a lot of value back online that was previously not online. Our efforts in, in getting homestead exemptions removed, in doing commercial appeals, and in fixing the, the calculation on the CHAP credit seem to be paying off, and we anticipate future gains on this, or, future gains on this down the road. The property tax rate this year is set at 2.248. It remains the same as last year. It remains the same as last year. And the targeted homeowner's tax credit has an effect, let me say this very carefully, it has an average effective homeowner's rate of 2.13. It should be said that when we calculate this average effective rate, is that it can vary some because we base it on a dollar amount. And as assessments go up, and as more homeowners come online, as homestead owners, that can change the number. You can kind of picture it like this. If you have two houses worth $100,000 each and you have $10 worth of tax credit to give to those two houses, each house will get $5. But if you add a house or increase the assessment, the rate will go down, the effective rate will go down. In the area of income tax, we have seen some positive news actually. We continue to see small gains in the employment base, the number of persons employed, but it is growing. We also, the good news also is that as you see, look at, if you look at the red and yellow line, the bottom two lines on that chart, the yellow one is the national unemployment rate, and the bottom thick red one is the state of Maryland unemployment rate. We've had some concerns that those two lines are starting to converge. Historically, Maryland has always been lower than the national rate. We are now seeing Maryland coming up to the national rate. And that of course is of some concern because if the short, if the state gets less income tax, it typically means the city is going to get less funds down the road. The good news however, is that Baltimore City is tracking the national, and we're not seeing those declines in Baltimore City. And that makes me very optimistic. We're looking at 293 million, 293.1 million dollars in income taxes for fiscal 2016. Again, I mentioned the wages are up $30 year over year, and capital gains appear to be online to, to provide some additional income also. And finally, we have the highway user revenue. It's slightly above 2015. This includes a $2 million one-time supplemental funding for the governor. And just so you might make a note, the Baltimore City is currently receiving 7.7% of the state's highway user revenue fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The next section is on fixed cost trends. I'm going to ask Ben Brosch, Senior Budget Analyst, to present this section of the, of the presentation. I think this is the first time I've ever seen Ben in a suit, so must be a special day.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Council President, distinguished members of the council. I'm going to be presenting on fixed cost trends for the city going into fiscal 16. Fixed costs are costs that the city is required to pay by law or by contract and cannot be easily reduced in the short term. There are several key categories of fixed costs, and I'm just going to kind of work my way down this chart. First is pension costs. The city has funds three pension systems for the sworn fire and police employees, for civilian employees, and for elected officials. The total general fund cost of these systems combined is 172 million for fiscal 16. Second is the retiree healthcare costs. The city subsidizes medical and prescription drug benefits for about 16,000 people in these plans. The total general fund cost for this is about 83 million in fiscal 16. Third is our contribution to the Baltimore City Public School System. By state law, the city is required to maintain educational funding effort on a per pupil basis. And also by state law, we are contributing a portion of the normal cost for teacher pensions. The total general fund cost for this segment of fixed costs is about 228 million in fiscal 16. Fourth, we have debt service. The city each year must budget for the payment of principal and interest on prior borrowing. Most of this is used for capital projects. Total general fund cost for this segment is 116 million in fiscal 16. And then finally, the last section is other costs, and this includes kind of a hodgepodge of different items including workers' comp, insurance, gas, electric, sewer, and water costs, and also the state mandated contribution to BCCC. You'll notice that this graph for the city fixed costs has steadied between fiscal 2007 and 2012. The costs grew at 22% or by 22%. In fiscal 2012, we began implementing reforms in the healthcare and pension systems as part of the 10-year financial plan, and since then, the cost curve has dramatically flattened. Another way to look at fixed costs is at a percentage of overall general fund revenues. The higher the fixed costs, the more that they consume of the total budget, and the more that they crowd out other spending. The trends appear to look pretty good here though. Fixed costs have peaked at 48% in fiscal 2012, 48% of general fund revenues, and in the proposed fiscal 2016 budget, they have fallen to about 44%. The drivers of these trends are generally reforms to the pension and healthcare systems. Next, we will be looking at the pension portion of this. The blue line on this chart represents the employee retirement system. This is the civilian system for pension costs. The red line represents the fire and police sworn system. The green line is the total costs. On the ERS side, the city is now phasing in an employee contribution into the fund for fiscal 2016 and is offering a defined contribution plan for new hires. Those reforms will save the city about $9 million in fiscal 16. On the healthcare side, the blue line here represents our cost without any plan changes, and the red line represents our actual healthcare costs. The city made some significant reforms to plan design, and also the city conducted a dependent audit to ensure that benefits are not provided to ineligible recipients. Through these reforms, the city is going to be saving over 100 million versus the baseline projection in fiscal 2016. And finally, in the longer term, these reforms have really helped us to make progress in reducing the city's unfunded liabilities. In just three years, we have reduced our combined liabilities for the fire and police, ERS, and OPEB systems by over $856 million. The key driver here is the Affordable Care Act, which provides prescription drug coverage for medical-eligible retirees. The city will be phasing out its prescription drug coverage by 2020. Thank you.
Okay. Next section is highlights of the recommended budget plan for fiscal 2016. This pie chart shows the operating budget by priority outcome. And go to the next slide. These are the, these are the priority outcomes, and for each priority outcome, you'll see the indicators that we measure to see how, how successful we are in, in improving quality of life for the city of Baltimore. So I'll go through the budget highlights for each priority outcome and explain how they connect to these indicators. I will not read these slides to you, but I'll focus on one or at most two items on each So under better schools, I want to focus on our capital investments here. The 38.7 million is included in the budget for school construction and renovation. 21.7 million of that is our contribution to the $1.1 billion school modernization program, and that's made up of 10.4 million from the beverage container tax, 900,000 in casino lease revenue, and 10.3 million in guaranteed tax base that is leveraged through our funding of the school system's retiree health benefit program. The 38.7 million also includes 17 million in general obligation bond funding for specific school modernization projects. The INSPIRE initiative, which is funded at $2.5 million in the capital budget. INSPIRE stands for Investing in Neighborhoods and Schools to Promote Improvement, Revitalization, and Excellence, and that, the idea here is to focus investments in transportation, housing, and open spaces within a quarter-mile surrounding schools to enhance the connection between schools and neighborhoods. Next slide. So looking at the connection to, to the indicators here, under the kindergarten readiness, the budget includes funding from Casino Impact Aid for Catholic charities to provide summer Head Start programming. Also provides transforming, funds to transform the Duke Lynn Daycare Center into a year-round Head Start and early Head Start center for nearly 100 children. And also includes an enhancement for Head Start teacher-coaches to improve, to improve the quality of the city's Head Start program. Next slide. Safer Streets. I'd like to explain the two-tier EMS system that will be put in place for fiscal 16. So currently, all of our EMS units are what's called advanced life support. And, but the fact is that more than half of the calls we receive for EMS service don't require advanced life support. They, they require basic life support. So under this plan, we'll be deploying more basic life support or BLS units mainly at peak times. So there'll be, there'll be more, more EMS units overall. You'll have better response times, very likely to have better patient outcomes because we won't be diverting, we won't be having ALS units working on basic life support emergencies, and having, for example, fire suppression apparatus responding to more serious, more serious emergencies. This will also address chronic staffing shortages in EMS, will reduce overtime, and we estimate that this plan will actually save the city money while greatly improving the EMS service. Next slide. The, under citizen perception of safety, the new police patrol schedule that we negotiated with the Fraternal Order of Police will put more officers on patrol at times when crime activity is highest. We expect that citizens will not only feel safer, but they will be safer as a result of, of this change. Stronger neighborhoods. Just want to highlight a couple things. Rat control is funded at 1.1 million, which is an increase of about 444,000, and that, that is redeployment of resources within the Department of Public Works base funding. It's not an enhancement. And their plan is to inspect every alley for rat burrows and bait those burrows on a 20-day cycle.
Every alley?
Every alley. I also want to highlight that, that the funding, capital funding for recreational upgrades. In 2016, we expect to open new gymnasiums at CC Jackson and Rita Church Recreation Centers. Construction will continue on the Cahill and Cherry Hill Recreation Centers, and the pool, and pools at CC Jackson and Druid Hill Park are slated for renovation. Next slide. So here I want to highlight in the last bullet, citizen participation in recreation programming. We are making a significant investment in the RecPro technology so that recreation and parks can track the use of recreation facilities and programming and thereby be able to better meet community needs for recreation. Growing economy. I want to highlight here that we are investing to upgrade computers at our two, at two one-stop career centers and our youth, our youth opportunity centers. Next slide. Here, under growing economy, to increase the number of jobs in Baltimore, we have doubled the funding for the Small Business Resource Center to 460,000. The center will hire a Spanish-speaking business consultant and upgrade its technology to serve more business startups. Under innovative government, this includes funding for the Mayor's Office of Information and Technology to build a data warehouse. Baltimore is lagging behind the curve in organizing its vast stores of data so that we can use them for analytics. New York City has used analytics to predict where building fires are more, most likely to occur. Chicago has used it to target rat baiting. New Orleans has used it to strategically deliver free smoke detectors, and Indiana is using it to help child welfare caseworkers make better decisions. So we're, we are excited to bring a data warehouse online and, and use it to improve city services. Next slide. Here I want to highlight fleet modernization. I mentioned that we are, we will be making our third major purchase under the new fleet financing plan. That will bring 505 new vehicles to replace old, fully depreciated vehicles in our fleet. The budget also includes 1 and 1/4 million in savings from fleet streamlining with more than 100 underutilized vehicles identified for removal from the fleet. For cleaner city, I want to highlight our proactive pruning, moving from pilot phase to full implementation in eight, eight or nine neighborhoods. And we're, we are shifting some funding from reactive tree maintenance contracts to, to take this more proactive approach. In the long term, the, the plan is that cyclical tree pruning will cut down on service requests, increase, extend the life of our trees, our street trees, and reduce storm damage and liability claims. Under a cleaner city, in, in water quality and water infrastructure reliability, we're seeing big ramp-ups in the, the number of acres of impervious surface treated by our stormwater program. And as I mentioned earlier, a very large increase in the, the number of linear feet of the water distribution system that will be replaced. Under a healthier city, I want to highlight, this, this budget includes funding for handheld devices for our Healthy Homes caseworkers that will allow them in the long run to serve more families. Healthy Homes prevents lead exposure and reduces asthma triggers and other health hazards through home visits and inspections. Next slide. Here I want to highlight that the Health Department intends to serve 1,200 clients in the Cardiovascular Disparities Program, and that's an increase of 42% from fiscal Last couple slides are on the capital budget. I know you, you will have the Planning Department in for a hearing on May 28th to talk about the details of the capital plan. This shows the allocation of the capital budget by type of project. And then the next slide gives you some breakdown of some key projects by funding source. Next, I want to turn to the fiscal risks. This is a slide that I, I share, I think, every time I come before this committee. Just two things that I want to focus on, one being the BCPS issues. BCPS is facing serious budget challenges, and they go beyond the state Formula 8 issues that we've, that we've heard so much about. And so that's a, that's a concern. BCPS financial issues certainly have, in the past, come back and had an impact on the, on the city's budget. And also, we've added midterm risk around civil unrest, the economic impact of civil unrest. We hope that that impact will be We hope that that impact will be modest in short term, but we know there's a long way to go before the legal issues are resolved. So we think it's important to include that as a fiscal risk. And also, as I think Kristin mentioned earlier, we are soon due, based on historical patterns, for a recession. Hopefully, that won't happen anytime soon, but again, we're well into the recovery at this point. And that's where I will end it. Next slide just shows ways that you can be in touch with the Budget Office, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We're going to begin with Council President Young.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first question that I have is in the Agency Detail, Volume Two, on page 53. With a total budget of $475 million, the Police Department's budget is almost 20% of their entire operating budget. This increased budget reflects the abolishment of over 200 positions, but still represents a $62 million increase over fiscal year 2015. One of the cost drivers is the contract change of 6% pay increase. However, those costs are partially offset by the abolishment of 200 positions. What is driving the increase in the Police Department budget year over year? Would you please provide a breakdown of cost drivers and agency-specific financial risks in advance of the agency's hearing?
Absolutely. And as I mentioned earlier, one of our largest single current services cost driver was, is the net cost of the Fraternal Order of Police contract. And it includes, it's a three-year, three years of pay increases, 2% in '14, 5% in ' '15, 6% in '16, 3% longevity's at year seven and '15. That is, those costs are partially offset by those position abolishments, and we also expect overtime savings. And those overtime savings are from what we budget, which is around 20 million. Of course, we've been spending upwards of 30 million, so we will see a greater reduction in actual spending. And we actually were seeing that the new schedule was working. It went into effect January 11th of this year, and the early indications were that staffing shortage overtime had been virtually eliminated. Now, you'll hear from the Police Department that they continue to struggle with attrition outpacing hiring. We took out a lot of their vacant positions, but now we're starting to see new vacant positions emerge, but still significant overtime spending. So we have some real challenges to work out there.
Okay, but even with that, we're still, we still have a Police Department for when we had a million people. Okay? So I think we need to right-size our Police Department like we right-size everything else. At the Board of Estimates, on our agenda dated May 6, 2015, with the six-year capital program, we approved revision to the FY 2016 capital plan, including an allocation of $4 million to the Department of Finance for technology improvement. Excuse me, this is my bronchitis acting up again. These technology improvements are described in the capital plan program document as follows: "to implement enterprise-wide technology improvement within the Finance Department, including modernization of the city's financial system." Please provide us with a more detailed explanation of what this money will be used for, what technologies are going to be acquired, and what efficiencies will these technologies create? We'd like to have that.
Sure. Yeah, we'll be prepared to talk about that in detail at our departmental hearing.
And the other thing, and then I'm finished because I have to attend a funeral. When we, it was on page, I think, nine. The water and wastewater rate-
Yes.
-will increase 11%. That would be 11% on the water, 11% on the sewer. Am I correct?
Yes. This is the third year of a three-year rate plan.
Right. For a 22% increase.
Well, it's 11% on your bill because the bill includes water and wastewater.
I know.
So they're each-
But will it be 11% on water and 11% on sewer?
Yes.
Right? So if it's 11% on water and 11% on sewer, that's 22%.
Well, if you add water and sewer together, it's 11% of that total. That's the increase. So it's not a 22% increase on that total. It's only an 11% increase.
The consent decree was supposed to end when?
2016.
2016.
Yep.
And there's a fund where all this money going to, am I correct?
There's not a separate fund. We have spent about $1 billion through fiscal 16 on the consent decree improvements, and we have more recently been placed under new requirements on reservoirs and wastewater treatment, water treatment. So we're foreseeing another $1.5 billion in costs related to those new regulations.
But what I'm saying is-
And that's what's driving the rate increases.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, there's some money where all these increases go into. How much is in that, that pile of money? Can you get that to the Budget Committee?
Yeah, we can, and we'll make sure that DPW is prepared to discuss that in their hearing.
Okay. Because at a time when we're cutting people's water off because people can't afford all these increases, we should be looking at not continuing to increase these rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Klein, I'm just going to do a few of mine, but I have a lot of questions on the Let me go back and begin with, there were several things that I did ask for three to four weeks ago that we have not received those responses to, and I would like to have them before this week ends-
Okay.
-because we have a lot of catching up to do just receiving the detail of the budget. So that would be very helpful and-
Will do.
If we could get the answers to those questions, and if you need me to elaborate on some of them now, I will, but I think you may, you have them.
I do, yes.
I then want to go to page three. And so, and we're having a hearing about this, oh, I don't have the date in front of me, but very soon, and it's along the same lines. The expanded rat rubbo, they don't inspect alleys now, all alleys in the city. And the question I asked was, they're now, every 20 days, they're going to inspect every alley in the city every 20 days. And so I haven't had a chance to go through the detail to see that, but I'd really like to include that not only in a response to the budget-
Mm-hmm.
...but an update to the hearing on dirty streets because the concern is that I get in community and other council people gets that they don't know when streets are being cleaned, and now we're moving to not only sweeping streets, but we're going to sweep all the alleys as well.
Yes, right.
And it sounds good on paper, but being out in community, I don't see it, and citizens don't see it because I know I'm continually being stopped, asked these questions. Now, there are pockets of neighborhoods that say, oh, yes, we sweep. And then the other issue is that they come and sweep, but they're sweeping zigzag because cars are parked-
Right.
-when they're sweeping, and so people don't know when they're coming to sweep, and it just seems like we're not effectively utilizing all these savings we're receiving. Also, under the Ten Year Plan Progress, pumped $100 million into blight elimination and infrastructure projects. Those are two totally separate things, and so if you would give a breakdown of what is being, what has been pumped into blight elimination with some detail-
Sure, yes.
-and what has been pumped into infrastructure projects, and has it been total resources into infrastructure projects, or is that inclusive of pilots, TIPS, or what have you?
Yes, got it.
And in the, if I'm correct, 65 million in general obligation bond funding, and I know that will be a bill that goes before the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee-
Yeah, this is actually the-
And then Planning will talk about that when they come-
Yeah, this is the 1617, so that's already been approved-
Right.
-by the voters.
Okay, but you know, what's approved and what actually gets allocated doesn't always match up, so we'd like to see what was approved-
Right.
-and what's going to be allocated.
Okay, yep.
And then if you'll go to page six. And I know that we've requested Human Resources to come in, and one of the reasons is to talk about benefits increasing in this tobacco use premium surcharge. We'd like the basis upon which that was decided-
Okay.
-and the impact it will be based upon employees, the relationship between, and I guess we don't know those employees that smoke, well, to take a look at that. And then the 4.8 million dollar increase to Pago Capital from the Unisys settlement to upgrade the city website and the property tax billing system. Would you separate those two and let us know what is being upgraded for the city website and what to the property tax billing system? What are the improvements we're going to realize for-
Yes.
-the investment that's being made? If you will go to page 18. And it would be helpful, and I know this is part of what we asked for, but in the streamline, the workforce of 76.6 million-
Right.
-would you break that out by agency if they were, you know, were they vacant, unfilled positions, that whole piece, and the dollar value and the number of positions by agency?
Yeah, this, this number is the planned, yeah, this is planned savings, so we don't have specifics by agency at this point of where the position reductions will come from.
Well, budget hearings don't start until the 28th, so-
Right, yeah, we won't have them by then either. These are future fiscal years.
Oh, these are things you intend to do in the future?
Yes, yep.
Ah, okay, so you don't, so all right.
I mean, we can talk about changes in positions that are in the fiscal 16 budget, but-
Okay, well, that's a start.
We don't have a specific set of reductions already planned out for all the future fiscal years.
Well, then, give us a little more than just the one line of what the vision is for that-
Okay.
-as well as restructuring health cost sharing, because that looks like shifting more of health costs onto employees and less onto the city, and whether that's pertaining to actives or retirees or both, and in what percentages-
Okay, yep.
-because you have some basis upon which to come up with this number.
Right, and we do have some detail in the executive summary. There's a 10-year plan section that has some detail, but we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay. And then if you'll go to page 23. Net parking revenue, I'd like to know what was the gross, and then what are the factors taking you to the net?
Okay, yep.
And explanation of the reduction in the recidation tax? And then speed cameras, you're projecting a $2.5 million revenue estimated-
Yeah.
-and that's based upon what month do you anticipate them going online?
Okay.
Do you know that now or no?
It's late, it's, we're assuming last quarter of the fiscal year-
So March of next year?
-that they would come up online, yeah. Yeah, and we hope that that's overly conservative, but we've, as you know, we've had difficulty with that program and want to make sure we're careful, yeah.
And you expect $2.5 million in three months?
Yep.
And then the all other, since that does have, I know it's not 10%, but it's the next second highest, what are the, what accounts for the revenue reduction in the all other?
Yep, I can talk a little bit about that now if you want.
Okay, sure.
So the items that are, make up reduction, casino lease, revenue is lower than what we had projected, property tax credits are more expensive, the nonprofit contribution will be in its-
Wait, wait, so the casino lease is lower?
Yep.
Property tax credits are higher, so we'd like to know-
Higher meaning costing more, so yeah, taking more revenue.
Yeah, so we'd like to know what's causing them, you know, that relationship.
Sure. The nonprofit contribution will be in its last year of the six-year agreement, and it's on a declining path, so that's-
And so it would be helpful to know what's the plan going forward?
Yeah, we're working on that. Central City Services, which is the payment-
And wait, wait, the nonprofit pilot this year is how much?
This year, it's, I think, 2.5 and going down to 1.5.
So it's going to 1.5 for fiscal 16?
Yeah.
If you could, yeah, just get us the exact number.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And this is the final year of that?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're negotiating a new agreement post-2016. Central City Services, that's the overhead payment from the utilities, and we've found historically that we've been overestimating those revenues, so we've adjusted that downward. And it's based purely, it's 6% of their operating expenditures.
Okay. And that'd be helpful because we did ask for some trend analysis on some things that we'd like to have sooner than later.
Okay.
So why don't you just give us a detail? You can say, but you know, there's something about seeing it in writing that just makes it a little clearer.
Yeah, okay. Do you want me to finish my list?
Oh, go right ahead.
I have three more items.
Okay.
In fiscal 15, we used funding from the drug gambling contraband balance for, put it in the capital budget for police IT projects. So this year's funding from drug contraband will be lower than it was in 15, because that was a one-time, that was a one-time use of fund balance.
We don't have drug contraband anymore?
We do, but we used, we used most of the balance in the fund-
Okay.
-for that one-time purpose. But we do have, I think we've budgeted 2 million, which is, that's what we typically budget from that source for ongoing operations.
For the Police Department?
Well, it's general fund revenue.
Okay.
Loan and guarantee, that fund, our costs to subsidize the loan and guarantee fund are lower because we purchased the Lexington Arcade. We were paying, we were paying lease on that building. Now we own it, so that cost goes down by 2.9 million. So that's an improvement to revenue. And then the use of fund balance in our revenue is, we have 6.3 million more revenue from fund balance, and that includes the speed camera money, the money for the bonuses, the employee bonuses that we had assigned at the end of fiscal 14. the employee bonuses that we had assigned at the end of fiscal 14. And what am I missing? One more, oh, the, the Unisys settlement.
Okay, um, page 23, I think I know, but rather than assume, the projection between fiscal 15, I mean, page 25.
Okay.
The projection between 15 and 16 budget and estimate, that's quite a hike if you look over the trend of the past few years. What accounts for the projected increase?
So this is showing 15 budget. The, the 15 actual is about 30 million higher than, than that, so.
So why don't you just redo this graph and show us the budget, but stick the actual in there too?
You want to see the, the projection for 15?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And I'm going to stop there and, oh, one other thing, and this is just, if you go to page 32.
Okay.
You talk about the fixed cost increased by 22%. Increased by 22% between fiscal year seven and 12. And then you say, then the city implemented reforms to bend the curve of unsustainable costs. What percentage did you bend the curve by compared to that in fiscal seventh and 12?
Okay.
Cause you don't give a percentage there.
Sure.
And what would be helpful on the, all these charts for, all these pie charts? You have percentages, if you could include the dollar amounts with them? You know, so that it kind of gives some impression of the value.
Okay.
Of what it represents in dollars. And I'm going to go to council vice, uh, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Craft.
Thank, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Klein.
Good evening.
Just a couple of quick follow-ups on the questions that were asked. There are some rumors about large numbers of resignations from BPD and BFD over the last couple of weeks. I've heard as many as like 30 and 40 from those departments. Do we have any verification on any numbers of resignations from either or both of those departments during that time?
I do not. I have my regular meeting with their fiscal folks tomorrow. I can, I can ask them about that.
Can you tell us how many people have resigned from those departments since the disturbances?
I, I would have to get that information. I don't know it.
Can you forward that to, to the committee?
Sure.
Okay. On the rat rubout plan, the, that rubout is similar to many of these other proposals. And, and that is, this is contingent upon adequate staffing and adequate training. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
I mean, so even though it, it's in there.
It is, it's a redeployment of existing positions. The, the issue is filling them and keeping them filled. That's, that's always a challenge.
Right, I mean, even though on there it says expanded rat rubout will inspect alleys every 20 days.
Right.
They can't go do that on July 1st because they don't have enough people to do that and they don't have enough people trained to do that. Isn't that correct?
I mean, they have the positions, cause this is all, this is within their base. But the, the issue I think you're getting at is the hiring and the, and the
What I'm saying is-
Retention of staff, right?
If someone read this and said, I'm looking at this overview here and it says for fiscal year 16, I'm going to have expanded rat rubout that will inspect alleys every 20 days. They would read it and say, oh, I'm going to get my alleys inspected every 20 days. But that's not what this says. It says the positions will be there due to rearranging of funds, whatever. The slots will be there, but whether we have people hired in them or whether the people who may be transferred into them have been trained to do that sort of work is a whole other question.
Yeah, and I think that's a conversation with DPW to see, you know, are they going to be able to hit the ground running? What are they going to do on July 1st?
So, so we don't want to go out and tell people that starting in the fifth school year 16 to look for their alleys to be baited every 20 days, right? Yes?
Well, I, I'd want DPW to answer that question.
They will. My, my question, and I'm, I'm really starting sort of with the summary and the way that I'm starting it is that I'm using your executive summary book and going with the summary pages. So it's sort of tied to that, but they, you know, but my questions are that. So on, on page four of the book, you said this new technology will increase the productivity of healthy home workers by 25%?
Yes.
Okay, this is on page, Roman numeral four.
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, wait a second, sorry.
With me?
Yes.
Okay, so tell me what in this new technology there is that will take these healthy homes, caseworkers, and by giving them new technology is going to increase their productivity by 25%?
Right, this is similar to what we've done with the food inspection where, you know, instead of having to go out, do an inspection, come back to the office, write up the paperwork. You're going to be able to enter information into the handheld that goes straight into the database. So based on that change in the workflow, you should be able to, to do more inspections per day.
You should be able to.
Yes, and, and it's going to take, it took, it took longer than we thought for food inspection to get that up to speed.
Housing inspection to get it up to speed?
Yeah.
Code enforcement?
It, it takes some time, yes.
The, on the proactive street pruning, how is that going to be scheduled? How is that going to be priorities going to be established? And, or is that, is that something we deal with wrecking parks?
I think, yeah, I think it's best to talk about the details with recreation and parks.
Okay. Okay, my, in, in this entire book. You have, you use a lot of different verbs. Counselor, right?
That's one of the tricks in putting these together.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what all these verbs mean.
Right, what's a synonym for enhance or expand, right?
Yeah, yeah, enhance is a fancy one.
Yeah.
Okay, provide, right?
Yep.
I'm not sure whether provide means to continue to do something or whether it means we're going to do something new.
Right.
Keep, I got keep.
That one's clear, okay.
And I think I have maintain.
Yeah.
Fund, I'm not sure about.
Okay.
As to whether that means to continue to fund or new funds or whatever.
Right.
Support is a whole other thing, you know?
Right.
That's like, do we stand by and go rah rah, this is a great program?
Yeah.
Or does that mean, do we write a check for a million dollars? Invest again, right?
Yep.
Continue, right? Help, give, and my final one, enhance.
Enhance, yes.
And then my phrase of maintain current service levels.
Yes.
Or maintain current service, not having the word levels on it.
Okay.
Okay, so you want to have some fun with these? Or do we have to take each one in the context and when we get to each one of these things, have to ask you what you mean in that particular section?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, well, let me ask you the broader question then about, one, an enhancement. Does that mean you're giving more money?
Yes.
Okay, so why can't you just say, we're going to give them more money? Wouldn't that be simpler?
Not as fancy, though.
Second, maintaining current services.
Yeah.
Versus maintaining current level of services.
Yeah, that's not, those are not meant to mean different things.
That's not a trick?
No.
Okay?
Nope.
All right, cause you know there's clearly a distinction between maintaining current services and maintaining the current level of services.
Yes.
So where it says maintaining current services and maintaining, maintaining current level of services, they mean the same thing.
Yes.
Okay. All right. What is, and this is on page, Roman numeral five. What is a head start teacher assistance evidence-based early childhood intervention practice? If you know.
I would say, uh,
Do you know?
Talk to human services about that.
Okay, all right, cause I got a lot of these fancy things that, I don't know what the hell they are.
Yeah.
All right, I'll look at it for somebody else for a couple of minutes.
The, the idea there is, is teacher coaches.
Well, I mean, I'd rather just say, we're going to have somebody come in here and help these teachers help these kids better.
Yeah.
Rather than trying to figure out what the hell something like that means, you know? So I'll pass it on to somebody else and come back.
Uh, Councilman Scott?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Klein, really quickly, this is something that we've talked about before. On page, yeesh, 45?
45?
Yes, sir. When you talk about, and we're going to talk to wrecking parks about it in more detail, when you talk about expanding the use of Rec Pro.
Yes.
To track participation in programming. Yesterday, we heard from the school system that they are going to be implementing a new data tracking system within themselves. And as you know, for the past six years, I've been saying that we should do that one time and not twice. That's duplication of services that makes absolutely no sense. That's not actually saving us any money, it's making us spend the same dollar twice. Because if the same kids that go to our schools go to our rec centers and vice versa. So we should do like every other city does and have one ID. And now that the school system is doing that, it's the perfect time for us to do that. So I think it's, you know, critically important for your shop to talk to them and wrecking parks about trying to not duplicate that and have it be one shot so that we don't have kids in recreation centers that have tutoring programs who are struggling in reading, but that rec center director does not know because they don't have access to that student's or that child's academic records for whatever school they're at. That, that stuff needs to be collated together.
And that's the, that's the data warehouse idea. Do you happen to know what software the school system is planning to use?
They're multiple, but I will tell you that many of the systems that they are using are, they are done by the exact same companies who do the one car system in DC, in Boston. So it is feasible that we could make that all one, but we have to strike while the iron is hot.
Right, and I, I should say that the, a lot of the funding for Rec Pro is, is connectivity of facilities.
Yeah, no.
That don't have it today and, and management of the system. So the, the software, the software's been purchased, but I think, yeah, integrating it better or maybe that can be done through the warehouse to bring that.
I just think that, I, I think that in the long run, if we're going to be trying to track data and usage, we should be tracking data and usage across the board, including for our after-school programs who, you know, come to this council around this time every year asking us to help them find funding. But, you know, we have to rely on information given from them and not data that we will be able to track ourselves if each child in this city, like in most major cities, had one ID that they use to do library, school, rec center, all of that. That's the kind of things that we have to do if we're truly going to look at this kind of data sharing model.
Yes, thank you.
My second question is on page 48. You talked about the, the data warehouse, which I think is great and for us to be able to use analytics to do everything in the city from, you know, proactive grass cutting to rat abatement, that's fine. Another thing that for Moet, I don't know if we've ever thought about it, but it's my understanding that we do not put a significant investment in security as far as cyber attacks for our, for our city and our agency and that we're at great risk. You know, what do you have to say about that and what, because this could cost us a lot of money, not just from the city's standpoint, but from citizens' information who are stolen, you know, if they're paying online to us for property taxes or tickets and things like that.
We, we have, we have provided increased funding for Moit to at least partially addresses what they see as the need for improving the cybersecurity. So we, we've addressed that to some extent in the budget. And I think that there's still, there's still some work to do to really figure out, you know, what are our vulnerabilities, what are the consequences of a breach in terms of the data that we have? But we're, we're getting started in the right direction.
I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Scott. Councilman Costello?
Thank you, ma'am. I have four quick ones. First one is page 10. Casino local impact aid. Originally, these numbers as presented to the Casino Local Development Council were 10 million with 7 million being available on July 1st. And then if revenues met what we had projected, can you? I'm, I'm not sure when that changed from nine, from 10 to 9.1.
Okay, I, I'll have to get back to you on, on that. I was not a part of that discussion with the, with the development council. But this is where we ended up in discussions internally with, you know, the folks who are interacting with the council.
Thank you. The second one I think is for Dr. Voorhees on page 26. Wave, or group three as you refer to it. Just out of curiosity, is there any sense of if group one had been the group that was assessed this year? If it would have been much different?
If, I, I don't know if I quite understand your question. Are you, are you saying if group, when group one gets reassessed, do you think it'll be different?
I'm sorry, I asked the question the wrong way. This, this year, group three, the southern portion of the city, is what's being reassessed on the three-year cycle?
Right.
Had group three been done last year and group one was done this year, do you think it would have been much different, a 9.6% increase?
I'm thinking that-
I haven't, I wouldn't expect you to have an answer to that.
I think it would still be in the five to 6% range, but that's just a guess. Cause you've seen, if you look back at group one, it had a 3.1% loss. And the prior time it had a 2.6% loss, so there's two assessment cycles, it went down. We would expect most of that, well, 5.7% loss to be recovered. And how much more, I don't know, but I'm, I'm, my guess off the top of the head would be around 5% increase.
Thank you. Third one, Mr. Klein, page 56.
Okay.
I think at the last quarterly briefing, Madam Chair, we talked about some risks and whether or not they should have been identified as, as a short-term or medium-term. And I'm just wondering if what you've coined as civil unrest, economic impact, I think we all know what that is, if that's something that's both a short-term and midterm risk?
Yeah, I actually hope it's more short-term. But as, as you know, there's a ways to go in the legal process. So, yeah, put it where you want, it's, it's a risk.
I mean, you're the one that's managing the risk with all due respect.
I hear you.
And then the fourth thing, I just wanted to second what my colleague, Councilman Scott, said about Moet at the end. As many people know, the city website was down, I believe, on Wednesday during the week of the event. And I hope that Moet is being provided what they need to ensure continuity of operations, especially if we face another event in the future, whether it be what we experienced or a natural disaster or anything else. Communicating with citizens is, is, in my opinion, the most important thing that government can do and we oftentimes fail at that, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Klein.
Hi.
Here we go. Mr. Klein, I think a lot of things have changed since this budget was put together and there hasn't been change, there hasn't been time to adjust. And I understand that. But I think we have wa, waked up, come to, as a group here, priorities that we've talked- priorities that we've talked about and tried to do things about, and we've won a little and lost a little and gone on with our business. But, um, I, I was looking at the priority list, I was looking at it because I know that the budget priorities have become the, the city stat blueprint. And, and I was looking at them, and I, I didn't see the kinds of things that we probably need to quantify now in the year to come. First and foremost, well, there is no first, well, first and foremost, children. There's something in there about schools, and we have our required amount of money that we always have to pay to the school system, and then we have the deal about the pensions, and we, and, and the mayor deserves a lot of credit around her efforts on the Capitol side for these, um, Century Twenty-First buildings. Amazing historic achievement. And we helped too. Uh, I won't mention how, but you remember, and it's still going on.
Sure.
So, that, you know, there, there's the children, and the children have become, I think, one of my colleagues, one of my colleagues said, the difference is people are listening to children. I think most of us did, but maybe he meant hearing children, um, more than ever and being recognizing that this is an urgent city of Baltimore issue. So, basically, I don't see in here a child's, but, a, 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 children and youth budget the way we've, and maybe it's there as a framework, but we're going to have to focus some of our resources many more than we have. There's a ten-year plan that talks about pensions and structural deficits and reducing property taxes. We need our children in the ten-year plan. We need them to be a column, an issue in the ten-year plan. We really need to structure that now. There's time between today and when we sit down with our budget to look at what we really think has to happen here for the beginnings of some equity and fairness and opportunity. That's a lot of money. But it's a lot more important than upgrading technical things that gee whiz. I mean, even when we upgrade them, they don't work. I mean, look at the poor school system. They, I mean, I know from first experience, they walk into schools, they, they can't count how many kids there are in schools. They just can't do it, and they can have a lot more software. And I agree with my colleagues, I like the idea of this, um, I, I'm not sure I like the idea, but I'll sure, well, listen to the idea of one card for every, a child to do everything. But that doesn't mean that the school system can operate that software and can get together with every other agency and we can make that work. So, that's, that's one thing. I mean, my colleague asked about vacancies in the police department now, right now. I don't know what they are, but we need to look at a budget based on that fact because we can't attract officers the way we did. We don't have twenty and out anymore, we have twenty-five and out. We don't have the kind of benefits that we did, so we got those benefits so we could fill our vacancies. But now, what are our vacancies and why are police officers riding two in a car? Because, really, they have to. And what about firefighters who work twelve hours? There's twelve-hour shifts, which seemed like such a great idea, and maybe it is. But we better check back with them to make sure that after what they've been through, they can sustain themselves personally, and some have said to me, wow, that's just about it for me. And that's what I mean when I say we need a new structure. We have a structural deficit in the way we put our budget together. And I would like to see it corrected jointly. I know that you care about the city as much as we do, and you want it to survive fiscally. But fiscally is extremely important, but if you raise a family, you know, the first thing is how you take care of the kids, how you raise the family, that you have a house to live in. And then you worry about saving for college. And that's kind of where we are now. We got to make sure we got kids that are fed and growing and, and we want them to go to college, but they're five years old. We got to just take care of them now so that they're around to go to college. So, I, I guess I'm talking to our committee as much as I'm talking to the poor budget chief here who, his money, he's about money, and that's what his job is. It's for us to be about the people, and I think that we can work together on that with a little give and take. But we cannot go back to our people in this city without substantial signs of the Titanic turning around. We are in recovery, we are showing gains. We are not in a recession anymore. And we need this now more than ever. And, Madam Chair, I, well, we all know this. We've all approved the after-school extra four million. There's so much else just in the structural deficit of how our budget is put together. And finally, I'd just like to say about city stat, which is, you know, I really care about because when the three-one-one calls come in and when the work's getting done, that's how you have accountability. This is only a, this is a PowerPoint, and I realize there's more to it, but, I mean, if we're going to base our accountability on budget outcomes, we ain't got, we don't need too many analysts up there because we're not even saying how men, what our goals are. We say that categories of goals are how many shootings. But city stat's about, okay, you said X number of shootings this year in Northern District. In fiscal sixteen, we want to see, well, we want to see zero, but we'll take half of that as a sign of progress in the right direction. These are not numbers here. These are just like, let's look at shootings. Let's look at kindergarten. Let's look at graduations from high school. Well, yeah, but what, what are your goals around those things? If you want city stat, you've got all these analysts that went to graduate school up there. What do you want them to count? City stat's about counting and accountability. These are important things, but we need to put, we need to be held accountable on them. And there's no, there's no accountability numbers, and there's no thought that's gone into numbers around that. That's where it's hard. So, I say to you, if this is what's coming into city stat as their main job, they might as well go home right now because there's nothing to account for in these agencies, in agencies, and there's no agencies specifically attached to the accountability. And I know we're going to have a collaborative effort with lots of agencies, which mean nobody's going to be shaken in his or her boots the night before. And therefore, we might as well close down the shop and say, well, we hope we have fewer shootings. I guess that's what you mean. It says number of shootings. That's just my commercial. The other thing is my heart. And what Baltimore expects of us here, all of us, all of us, not fighting with each other, but knowing when we walk out of here this June, we better, better have a down payment and, and we might, we better be working on the structural deficit that is the current way this budget is constructed and what the priorities are.
Thank you. Councilman Riceinger.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. If we can turn to page ten with the Casino Local Impact Aid, just to piggy follow-up or, or add to Councilman Costello. I just, uh, Mr. Klein, uh, when the first bullet, it says six point nine million will be available for projects on July first. So, what you're stating and committing, that July first, there's going to be six point nine million dollars that's going to be going into the LDC.
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, additional appropriations will become available if revenue exceeds the six point nine.
Right.
Okay. So, we don't know, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just to, to put it in the context of our experience, this year, we, we, um, we made seven million available on July one. We, we appropriated ten. We're getting less than six. Hopefully, hopefully, the projections will be better for sixteen, but, um, the idea here is they need some, you know, they need some certainty of how much money they have for the year. And, and it can't be, they can't be, they, meaning the, the Local Development Council and the folks, you know, here in City Hall who are, who are running the programs around the casino. And if, you know, if by chance the, the revenue is above nine point one million, you know, we, we can have supplemental appropriations. I mean, we'll, we'll appropriate the funding that, that we receive. But the idea here is to set it at a, at a level where we don't have to come back to the council later on needing more appropriation.
Okay, so, we really don't know what the numbers are. Do you have any idea because, because of the curfew, the casino had to lose money because they were closing at ten o'clock, and it's something that we had to do, public safety over, you know, everything else. But, um, do you have any idea when those numbers may come in? Because we haven't had an LDC meeting and it hasn't been scheduled. So, it's in my district, it's also in Councilman Costello's district. Do you have any idea when those, you might be getting those numbers?
We usually get, um, numbers for the previous month, uh, about midway through the, the month. So, we'll probably be getting our, um, April numbers fairly soon. We may not see the full extent of the, you know, impact of the curfew until we, we get the numbers from May also. But we can certainly, you know, we have a coordinator for this program who communicates regularly with the casino operator, and we can certainly get up-to-the-minute information on, uh, the impact they've seen from the civil, the civil unrest and the curfew.
Okay. I, I just, Madam Chairperson, I just, I just want to piggyback on Councilwoman Clark. I think that, that, um, if I read it correctly, but my, my spin or my opinion on this is regards to the budget, is that, um, I think of what's happened in the past, and I'm not going to give you a long story, but what happened in the past couple of weeks. I think we got the message, you know, of what's happened in the city of Baltimore. And if I'm saying this correctly, is that in the past, going back to two thousand ten and two thousand twelve and now, the administration, this mayor has, uh, made, um, reforming the, the union, the pension, uh, salaries, contracts. And that, and, and the basis, the basis of that was basically to, to cut. I know we got, they're looking at the structural deficit here in ten years, but I think the objective was to do these cuts. And the thing is, I think what we're saying now is that we should look at these cuts, this money that we saved, is to look at it and say, okay, what about our children? What about, especially with our children and jobs and after-screw programs? And I think that, I think that's what you're saying is that, that what, what we saved by voting with the mayor on that for those cuts and, and to re- reforms, is let's look at it instead of saying two hundred and some dollars, whatever the number was with Moet and all that, is to say, hey, what's more important? It's just like what you say about a family. You know, you got to pay your rent, you got to put food on the table before I say, look, I'm going out and buying my four kids cell phones, you know. And I think we have to look at the basics, and I think that's what the council is really looking at. That's what we're trying to ask you or say, not ask, but say to you to partner with us on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Middleton.
Thank you. Well, since we're just on that topic, maybe I'll just kind of, um, chime in to, and then go to a couple of other things. But, um, well, first, I'll, I'll say that I concur with, um, Councilman Kraft when he was going over the, the different verbs that you use. And one of the things that stuck out with me was one, pumped, you know, when you're presenting things to, you know, important things to the, the council, those are words that you don't use in a, in a document that is supposed to be a trustworthy document. And he mentioned some other words, expanded, and expanding the rat rubout when, um, we still got to get a handle on the street cleaning. So, you know, just putting things out there like that with, with back, with not having backup is, um, it just makes the document look like it's a joke. I mean, I can't put in any clearer. And then just to add a piece to what they were saying about what has happened the last couple of weeks, we, it's definitely been proven that we need reform all the way around from police. We need trust in the police department. We need to build a relationship between the youth and the police. I say time and time again, when we lost the, um, the FO, the, uh, those PAL programs, and that was a strong connection, and when that was lost, that was a disconnect with the youth and the, the police. So, we, you know, we were in a state of emergency, and, um, we really have to think hard and long on how we, um, divvy out and arrange funding. And then I guess I'll get to one of the questions, which kind of piggybacks, piggyback on, um, how you had mentioned how the importance of family and how they work with youth, how the importance of city retirees are because they're the grandparents, the aunts, uncles that, um, work with, with the youth of the city. They live in the city, they've paid their dues of working for city government. And then when I, on page six, there was a topic tobacco use premium surcharge and elimination of ED drug coverage for retirees. And then in the summary book, I kind of go to that page seven, and I, I'm, I'm feeling like, well, why are you giving all retirees, you're adding a surcharge for tobacco users when I don't remember any wellness programs initiated to try to help, um, our fellow retirees, you know, get off of smoking or try to cure that habit? But it seems to be like you're penalizing them instead of implementing the wellness issue, the wellness, um, initiative before you even start things like this. Most of our retirees are retirees, remember, our retirees are on fixed incomes, and a lot of them now still go out and get second jobs while they're collecting the small little pension. And then to, um, add a, tobacco, you, it's, it's a, it's a disease. So, I'm, you know, I don't know if that's been talked about yet or negotiated or, but I see it basically as a form of discrimination. Okay. Okay, and then I got something here that was sent on May eighth of helping people. That's May eighth of two thousand fifteen, so you're kind of doing it together? That doesn't make sense. You, it, it seems like you want to help especially the people that paid their dues and retired and messing with their, looking at their plans. I think it's a, I, it's a, I think it's a form of discrimination. I think it's just a injustice of someone that has spent thirty or more years working I think it's just an injustice of someone that has spent 30 or more years working for the city. And I, I, it's so, it's so negative. And to add that to what has been happening, it's been in our eyes for the last two or three weeks. I, I, I hope you go back to the table and rethink at least this one initiative or just anything dealing with retirees. You have a comment on that?
No, no ma'am.
Is there, who, who should we call that can really explain this to the Budget Committee? What department is that in, Human Resources?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm happy to explain it if that's what you'd like. I mean, we, the, the city provides and has provided smoking cessation classes. We cover medications, patches, you know, to help people quit smoking. That's, that's something that we've done for a long time. And the idea here is you don't pay the surcharge if you, you know, if you don't use tobacco. And we, we, we want to improve the, the health of our employees. And we see this as a way to, to encourage them, if they didn't have enough encouragement already, to kick the habit.
I think it's a, you're targeting and it's a form of discrimination. I'm finished.
Thank you, Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Kraft?
Mr. Klein, I'm not going to go through specific agency questions because I started on some and they're all going to have to get answered by those respective agencies. I would direct your attention to the, and I don't have it in front of me, so I'll just, the reference. But I'll say to you, this has to do with the renegotiation of the pilot, okay? In your preliminary budget, you had language, something to the effect of, we have to renegotiate the pilot in a fairer or more just or something like that.
Yeah, equitable.
Right?
Yep.
And when you put out this executive summary, you took out that comparative adjective. So it was, you know, now you said, we just have to negotiate it. And my question is, are we going to try to get a fairer pilot? Or are we just going to try to get a pilot? Because I know many of us were very unhappy with the pilot that was negotiated the last time. That, you know, six, 20 million dollars over six years. And now if we're going to be looking at next time, I mean, we certainly don't, you know, we couldn't do worse. And so when you had that adjective and I do apologize for not having it.
Yeah, I'm looking at page 18 and this is the executive summary. In fiscal 2017, the city will pursue a new MOU with nonprofits that presents an equitable approach to sharing the cost of services with taxpayers.
Right, if you look at the preliminary, right? If you look at the preliminary budget that you gave us on page 18, that sentence reads, "The city will pursue a new MOU with nonprofits that presents a more equitable approach to sharing the cost of services with taxpayers." But when we got this final executive summary, the word "more" was taken out. And so my question was, was that an intentional deletion to take out the word "more equitable" and just leave an equitable approach? Because there is a big difference between a more equitable approach and an equitable approach. And, you know, I certainly was very enthused by the fact in the preliminary budget, it said a more equitable approach. And then when I saw it come in as an equitable approach in this one, I thought, goddamn, we're backing off again. Excuse me.
Well, I mean, I think, I think, I think it, I think it's, I think I'm all right saying that we are, you know, pursuing an agreement that would increase the city's revenue.
Would you say it would be a more equitable approach?
I don't know about that, but it, it will be equitable.
Okay. Page 18. It's about the, it's about the pilot with the nonprofits. Remember on the, yes, right. Right, exactly.
Right.
The, okay, so I wanted to pick up on what, what my colleagues were saying. Because I think when we're talking about the budget and this budget and looking at it in view of what has happened. I, in looking at page 119 of the summary in Live Baltimore, and I read this last sentence and it reminded me of the movie Dave. I don't know if you've ever seen the movie Dave.
Oh yeah, I liked that movie.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. So it says, "This service will receive enhancement funds," that means you're going to give more money.
Right.
Right? "to create a position to support resident retention programs," right? So they're, we're going to give them money to say, people, you, you live here, you should keep living here, right?
Yeah, and this is related to the tax credit.
Right.
The, the resident retention tax credit.
And it reminded me in the movie of Dave that where they said, he's trying to raise the money to get the daycare center open. And he sits down with the Secretary of Commerce and he says, "We're spending 20 million dollars a year to make people feel good about the car that they already bought."
Right.
Right?
Yep.
Okay. Well, that's what this makes me think about.
Yeah, I mean, the idea here, okay.
Let me finish. If we have good schools and safe streets, we don't have to worry about marketing retention. Because people won't leave. Not only will they not leave, they will stay here and their friends and family will come here. And that's where our focus should be. So I don't know how much money that is, it didn't take time to look at it right now. But I'm willing to bet that that is enough money to pay for at least one and maybe two people to work in a rec center this summer, which I think is much more important in terms of keeping people, residents retained and taking care of the problems that we're facing right now. So, which, which will take me to my next step. Because I said something about it last night and I'm going to reiterate today in this first hearing because we have time. I think we need a new budget. I think that we have to look at this budget and we have to look at where we are. And let me explain why I feel this way. We have a unique opportunity here. A very unique opportunity. We have the President of the United States. We have our congresspeople, our governor, our mayor. But we have the President of the United States and we have the entire world watching us. The President stood up and talked about urban America and how what happened here is not just about Freddie Gray, but it is about the long-term systemic, deep-rooted problems in our urban areas. Shifting 4 million dollars, shifting 6 million dollars, making sure we have full funding for community schools is what we have been doing for 50 years. And everybody feels good about it and we can all run around and say, okay, we did it. But it doesn't make a difference, long-term, big picture. We have an opportunity while the whole world is watching. Because it is so serendipitous that our budget cycle happens to hit right now. Because we have the opportunity to go to the President and to go to the Governor and to go to everyone else and say, look, we can do it here. Take Baltimore and rebuild an American city. It happened here, let's show them how to do it right, okay? Help us. Help us. You know, what do we need? The short-term money? You know, what, the stuff we talked about easy, you know, keeping the rec centers, keeping the pools open, making sure every kid has a job this summer, you know, that, that wants a job. Making sure that every rec center is open after school, when schools open back up. And making sure that if a kid wants a job after school, that they've got one. You know, those are the low-hanging fruit. But tearing down every single vacant house in the city of Baltimore next year, not 1,200, but next year, every single vacant house. Taking all the potential for fire out of play. Taking all the potential for the drug addicts to hide, all the places for the crimes to go away. You know, turn those places into open fields, whatever, leave them ripe for development. Go to the President and say, "We need 250 million dollars to clear this." That's a start. Change the picture, change the portrait of these neighborhoods, okay? Nobody has to start with something. Go and say, and I'm just talking, okay? Go and say, you know, quit having demonstrations about the red line. And go to Washington and say, you know, I don't know how we accelerate this, I don't know whether you can accelerate, what you can accelerate it, but you know, you see what's happening here. And what does everybody sit on, on TV? Person after person after person after person say, what do we need? We need jobs. We need jobs, we need a place to work. Well, you know, if we build a red line, we put a lot of people to work. Just like we do when we take building down. So, you know, and everybody needs a red line. Bill Cole got up and said, you know, showed a map of the city. And he showed, these are the jobs and these are the job centers. And you get 30 minutes, 60 minutes, 90 minutes to get there. And all these new jobs, Amazon, everything over on the east side, all the people that need the jobs are on the west side. And they can't get there. And until we build something to get them there, we're just spinning our wheels. We have a unique opportunity and we should be taking advantage of this unique opportunity. We can sit down, we can have a committee, we can have a commission, we can have a blue ribbon, whatever the hell you want to call it. And we can sit around a table for the next six months and the opportunity will be gone. We need to be on those doorsteps today, tomorrow, saying, this is what we need today. We have maintenance of effort, 200 and whatever, 250 million dollars, right? Our sister counties, last year, how many of them went in and request waivers on maintenance of effort?
None last year, but.
The year before, I'm sorry, okay. Went in and asked waivers of maintenance of effort. If there was ever a time for us to go in and say, we need a waiver on maintenance of effort because we got to put that money somewhere else. And you, and Governor Hogan, you were in our streets, you brought your administration down here, you did a hell of a job helping us. Now we really need your help because we need to take some of that money and do something else with it. I'm just throwing ideas out. Okay. But anyhow, those are some thoughts. I have a lot of questions, I'll save them for when we get to those sections. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Klein, we're at a juncture in Baltimore city's history that we've not been at in decades. I don't think anyone who's here tonight was here when the city faced crisis similar to what we experienced a few weeks ago. And I also believe it's an incredible opportunity for our city. And as my colleagues have stated, I, I sincerely believe our budget present, this budget presented before us does not adequately reflect the needs of our citizens and how to move our city forward. I think if nothing else, it's an opportunity for us to really take a hard look at how we invest in the most precious asset of our city, which are its people. And we'll continue as we go on through this process. I do want to announce one revision to the budget hearing schedule. On Friday, May 29th, from 1:30 to 2:00 PM, we will hear from the Inspector General. And then from the Department of Finance from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM. I would like to say that we are not adjourning. We are recessing, this hearing stands in recess until the budget hearings begin. Oh, I'm so sorry, we have Councilwoman Clark.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
No, go right ahead, my apologies.
I just had a couple of practice, I just nuts and bolts kind of questions.
Sure.
A couple of them. Actually, I have three. One. What is, I, what is the EMS two-tier system again, please? It went by me as fast as an EMS.
Yeah. So right now, our EMS units, our ambulances, all of them are what's called advanced life support. So this is, these are the emergency medical technicians, the highest trained people who do this kind of work. So it's.
My book with me, I just have my PowerPoint. I don't want, yes.
It's the old, it's the old, you know, killing a fly with a sledgehammer idea that, that even minor, relatively minor emergencies, we're sending, you know, these highly trained technicians. The idea here is to have a combination of the advanced life support units and what are called basic life support units. And have, there'll be more total units, particularly at peak times when we get the most calls. And so the idea is with more units, we can get there faster, provide better service. And we actually end up saving money. And that's mainly because of the, the difference in cost between a, an EMT and a technician who works with basic life support, has that level of training.
So basically, we're going to buy more vehicles, is that it? For these basic people?
There'll be a temporary increase in vehicles, but we, we.
And then what are we going to use to, and how are we going to figure out when, if I call 911 and say, hurry up, I got an emergency here, how do they figure out which one to send?
Yeah, the dispatchers, they, the dispatchers will, you know, ask you questions, they, they need to figure out.
I can't talk to them, I'm, I'm just calling 911. If I could talk, I would have called my daughter.
If you can't talk to them, they'll send advanced life support.
They will?
Yeah.
So how do they decide from the get-go who they send?
Based on, if you can answer questions, then they can figure that out.
I'm just an old lady and I'm not feeling so well. And I need a free ride to the ER.
Yeah, I mean, if, obviously, the individual, individual cases, the, the fire department should be able to address those in their hearing.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a problem. Okay, so the, my next question, I got three. In your, in your risks or possible risks, or someplace where you mentioned the circulator, the words earned income were included in the sentence.
Yeah.
Earned income from what?
From, mainly from advertising on the buses.
Okay, but you're not talking about fairs.
No, no.
Because actually, that's monetarily self-defeating, actually. But you're not talking about that.
No, that's not our proposal.
You're not doing fairs.
No.
Okay, and finally, that and that. And maybe we can talk about it some other time. But I, I really missed when you went through the, excuse me, it was near the beginning where there were these big numbers about, and I did not understand, in, in the end, we saved 100 some million dollars. Oh, here it is. 10-year plan initiatives completed. It's page 15.
Yeah.
Oops, sorry. I'm sorry. Oh no, it's the next page, 16. It goes. Oops, sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's the next page, 16. It goes on to the next page. So we started out with whatever this, a gap.
Yes.
This is like analogous, I know this, you know, I got a five-year-old kid, but I'm putting my money away. I'm worried about college. But it's 745 million dollars. At the bottom, are you showing a cumulative, a current cumulative gap of 612 million?
Yes, but, and that, that is.
133 million after we practically killed firefighters, fire officers, police, retirees.
Take a look at slide 14.
Oh, good. I knew she would.
So.
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm going in.
Slide 14.
I'm on page 14.
Okay. So we, when we started the 10-year plan, we projected a cumulative budget shortfall of 745 million over 10 years. And that, so that was, that was the difference in our projection of the cost to maintain the current level of city services and the revenues we would bring in, right? The red portion of these bars you see on this chart, that, you see the, see those?
Red, yes, sir.
Okay. Those represent the remaining shortfall to maintain the current level of city services. So we have, we've cut that shortfall in half. The green portion of the, the green portion of those bars represents the costs of initiatives in the 10-year plan to reduce the property tax rate, to increase infrastructure investment, improve employee pay, and strengthen the balance sheet. So, you know, increase our reserves, shore up our workers' comp program.
I, I'm not, I'm having trouble with the.
Yeah. So the, well, the, the issue is that the 612 represents the cost, the shortfall for main, both maintaining current services and funding those initiatives that I mentioned, the tax relief, the infrastructure investment, the employee pay, things that cost money in the 10-year plan.
I understand that. So what that means is that we've saved, in all this time, with all this stuff that we've done and all the rhetoric and all the taking away things from people, we've saved 133 million dollars?
No, that, that's.
Well, that's what the subtraction says. I'm, okay, I'm, I'm just misreading your numbers. I don't know what everything in between is. It go, it, it goes, but it's been a lot of things happening in between. And at the bottom line, we've done a lot of damage to people. We have. We've done a lot of damage to our ability to attract people, not to live here, but to work here, or to stay here, once they've been working here. And it's, and all we've got to show for it, out of 745 million, that was the big number, is 133 million.
Yeah, but we've, we've, we've.
Now, maybe, like, I didn't write this.
We've lowered our tax rate, we've increased our infrastructure investment, we've increased employee pay. I mean, those are costs that are shown there. Now, if we had.
I'm looking at.
If a 10-year plan had been simply about balancing the budget, then we've cut that shortfall in half. But that's not all the 10-year plan was about.
No, no, you're right. You know what? You're right. It's not about the structural deficit at all. It's about cutting people out of their benefits so that you can put money where you really would rather put it. That's what it is. And that's what this shows, although I didn't know it until you started talking. Now, that is terrible in this moment. And so we need, we know what it's about. Some of us kind of, no, I never knew that. I really believed it, although I was against it. I didn't think it was worth the cost. But, and like fire and police and pensions and stuff. But now that I'm seeing this, I realize what it is. And that's fine. It puts us all in the right mood to realize that between now and when we walk in here on the 27th, we should have, and you should have a share of, our budget. I think that the way we should construct it is based on what the budget already has. We can take the school, that whole thing about schools and widen it into kids. We can do the economic thing and we can create jobs for our people. We can do the health and look at retirees. And what we can do is really just take that framework and make substitutions and, and just work it out from there. Use your framework, but change some priorities. And, and if we're going to use that in city stat, put some numbers to it so that they have something to count. Shootings, what reduction in what police districts by month in fiscal 16?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay, go. All right. This hearing stands in recess until the budget hearing begin on Wednesday, May 27th at 1:00 PM. Schedule for the upcoming budget hearings is available on the City Council's website. Thank you all for attending this hearings. Please check area around your seat. Make certain you have everything you brought with you. We'll be closing the room shortly. Please have a safe drive home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.